You know that.
That's true.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of March 11th, 2019. As always, may I remind you that this meeting is being recorded and it's also being broadcast live, so keep that in mind. I'd ask you to please all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. You also please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you everyone for coming this evening. Superintendent's going to give us his report and then we're going to talk about an assessment and setting an assessment. That's one of the reasons we are having this special meeting this evening. Seeing the crowd we've got in here, maybe we should move school committee meetings to Monday nights. Because I thank you all for coming. Okay, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I'll just go through in your packets right now before we get to the supplement items that were passed out tonight. You'll see a letter that I sent to Mr. Lyman on behalf of the committee last week and Mr. Lyman's response from the town of Whitman regarding their budgetary issues and crisis. You'll also see a notice from Mr. Lyman to me and Christine and the selectmen regarding some other financial information from the town of Whitman. And you'll see what was passed out on the Tuesday department meeting or Wednesday department meeting after our last executive session, so that you folks can see the numbers from the town of Whitman and some of their thoughts and what they're going to need to do as far as trying to solve some of their budget issues. For the purpose of this evening, we gave you some handouts. And I apologize for the delay in the handout, but some of the insurance issue items were just voted on today and they were in the positive for us. So your handout, handout one today, we're able to reduce the budget proposal by $292,000 without affecting any personal or people. It did have an impact or we were able to save some money in insurances to the $275,000. Excuse me. We reduced our subline by $20,000. We reduced our Chromebook initiative, something you voted on last year, by $53,000. We still have $40,000 committed to Chromebooks. That's by lease, but we were supposed to buy another $53,000 this year. We cut that. We cut $2,000 from our facilities general supply. We cut $5,000 from our instructional supply subline budget. The class that I'm taking right now was a one-time expense. We thought it might have been for two, but it's one time for $10,000. We did cut our legal budget by $10,000. We did cut our ELL supply budget by $10,000. And we did cut our summer school, our summer student tech help by $5,000. So that will fall back on technology to the tune of $292,000. That being said, the next page is a new assessment of where we're at right now. So what I'm asking the committee right now, where we stand at level services, instead of 16.4, we're looking for a 15.1 assessment from the committee for level services. So that's something for you to see. And as we, as you direct us, we will move down or stay the same. Item three is a letter that I sent to all district staff today. Kind of discussing what our budget is, where we're at with the school committee, highlighting that where we're underfunded and unfunded by the state. And I want to keep repeating that for the record, for the community, for us as a staff, that it's not just chapter 70 money, it's not just the governor's budget with funding regional districts and funding towns. It's the unfunded and underfunded mandates that are, that is bleeding our district right now. Had a case this week, on Friday afternoon, that I was called, that a staff member was in urgent care because of a bite. Had a phone call today of a student who has suicidal ideations and suicidal threats. These are our students. Also had a conversation with a parent, an elementary parent, about gifted and talented and what are we going to do for our students that are achieving success in the classroom and how can we push them forward? We do a lot of great things here and they're all our kids. And some of these unfunded and underfunded mandates are now taking away the decisions that we have educationally for our students. And shared that with staff today, I think they were, an eye-opener that were $5 million plus in unfunded and underfunded mandates. That alone to the staff, that our special education budget for out-of-district placements is set at $4,394,278 with an increase of $844,000. As the superintendent, when I have a conversation with the special ed director about a student who has social, emotional, or trauma issues and ends up biting staff, and it's a conversation like, Jeff, I don't want to send this kid out of district because you're going to have to go to school committee and ask for another $60,000. That's where we're at right now, because that's happening in our district. So I wanted to share that with staff so they had an idea of where we are and potentially where our cuts will be made. The next agenda item, or the next packet item, is something you've asked for us, from us, something the community has asked for us, something we really tried hard to keep under wraps, so to speak. Not to hide anything from the public, but to not have people get nervous and bail or leave or decide to apply others elsewhere. Not just our staff members, but I don't think it necessarily worked, because there's been a lot of talk in both Whitman and Hanson about budget. And I asked the two middle school principals today for their numbers of students coming to the high school as freshmen. Whitman Middle right now has about 106 students coming here as freshmen with 27 VoC kids applying. VoC took everybody this year and they have six private or Catholic school applications out. Whitman Middle has 201 students total in grade eight. They have 34 students that are already accepted at VoC with 20 on a waitlist, so that's 54, and 13 have been applied to Catholic school. Those numbers I haven't seen since I've been here. We usually have some students go to VoC and very few applying to Catholic schools. I think the word is out that there might be some severe budget cuts and our eighth graders are seeking to go to school elsewhere. So in our cuts that we put together, these are general impressions of level service cuts. Town of Whitman asked us to get to zero. School committee, we got to zero. If we had a level funded budget, the cost to the human factor are 54 positions, 48 total people. Class sizes, I think people have asked about class sizes. We've asked the elementaries to cut one teacher per grade level. This is getting to zero. Anywhere in between, we can fall. We've asked Hanson Middle School to put up numbers, might be six. Whitman Middle School might be three. The high school will be every discipline, at least one teacher. We would lose our elementary math program. We'd lose our elementary science program. We'd lose foreign language. We'd lose electives. We'd lose financial literacy. Middle school related arts might have 40 to 45 students per class. We'd lose the counselors that we're asking for, that we've reallocated funds for. Elementary music would take a hit. Our reading program that we're trying to budget for and pilot next year, we wouldn't do. And we'd lose a district curriculum coordinator.
All coordination.
All curriculum coordinations. We would actually eliminate curriculum coordination in the district. That's at a zero. I'm asking the committee to come in at level services at the 15.1% to keep us where we're whole, to do what's right for our kids. Because other than that, we get into people. And that's why I wanted to send something to the district staff today, that we are going to advocate for our people and our programs, things that we've committed to for the best interests of our students and our communities. We're already seeing flight, I think by the numbers of our eighth graders. I haven't seen any applications for school choice, but our school choice numbers are up from last year, moving out of district. And our charter school numbers are up, which increased our budget as well. So we have budget increases through state and, through state mandates and unfunded mandates. We don't have increases necessarily for anything new to the district. The reallocation of funds through the Unit B reorganization would have, could potentially still give us our elementary counselors, our elementary math program, and continue with our elementary science program. The things we've already cut so far, the $292,000 are not people. Anywhere else, we are going to start cutting folks.
Jeff, I want to back up to the document with the actual underfunded, unfunded that went out to the staff.
Yes.
I know that the staff had the opportunity to get it, but I don't believe the public did, so I'm going to go right down it quickly.
Sure. But just to let you know, it was in the budget book that we presented on February 6th.
I know, but it's.
Yes.
There was some chatter, it was a little bit confusing. So the actual was $3,1,446, which $2,48,798 not funded.
In special education costs.
In special education. Circuit breaker eligible, $1,323,122 not funded, $370,474.74. Sped transportation, $897,275, $897,275, nothing. Mandated transportation, $1,124,320, not funded, $301,036. Homeless transportation, $39,011, not funded, $26,527. ELL staff, $159,618, that was $159,618. At evaluation, $75,000 was $7,500, $7,500. School choice out, $65,822, $65,822. Charter schools, $634,405, not funded, $473,864. Staff PD reimbursement, $90,000, $90,000 equaled out. SIMs and EPI MS, $80,000, $80,000. Reported audited auditing, $34,000, $34,000. Ed services for expelled or suspended students, $12,128, $12,128. Administrative mandates with cost CPI, $12,500, $12,500. Integrated PK, $650,000, $488,000 not funded. For a total of $8,131,147,000, underfunded, $5,67,542. Does anyone have any questions on those numbers? I just thought, you know, the staff got it, it was important for anybody that might be coming this evening to hear it and see it. Fred?
Just want to make note, those are the actual expenditures for FY '18.
Yes.
FY '19, I believe we're already over.
Yes.
Our budget, we've already exceeded what we had budgeted, which was based on the '17, but so it's only getting worse. Not better?
Anyone else? Questions, anyone? Okay, continue on.
And the last two pages for the committee did two different formats, proposed increases just a line item by line item instead of the entire budget. These were all in the budget. This is just cut and pasted from the budget. So you could see all our increases on one sheet. And then the FY 20, 20 increases and decreases with a total on the end. Again, that was from the budget, from the line item by line item, but it was fair to see that we did decrease in some areas and increased in others. So that you had those two documents to see where we went up, exact totals, and where we actually went down to be equitable.
Questions, anyone? Hillary, anyone have any questions? As you know, I have to tell you this, I'm not being repetitive, I have to tell you this so everyone understands and if there's any questions, stop me. We have to set an assessment tonight. The assessment can only decrease after it is set this evening. It cannot increase. It can only decrease. So as you heard the superintendent say, 15.1 in the assessment would get us to the level Open it up. Committee?
Okay. I recommend we set it at 15%.
Second.
Say 15, even or 15.1?
15, even.
Okay. I have motion in the second. Typically, when we move to this part, we talk about what we're going to lessen, are we going to hit E and D? One of the problems with E and D, as Fred just alluded to, is what I read to you was a '17 budget. What's coming forward, as Jeff has said to you, he might be able to give you a little look at what we're doing as we speak or how it's gone up.
So we're already up, Christine, in special education right now? 650?
650.
650. So in a matter of two weeks, a couple of out of districts and transportation costs. It comes down to two or three students sometimes. So we're up. I think we can use circuit breaker money from next year. We don't like to do that. We like to make sure we have that, because next year's costs could go up as well. And something I, we sent to staff and to principals, we froze the budget when we got those numbers last week. So we might recoup from some savings in this year's and FY '19 budget. So the budget is frozen in the district right now because of special education costs, but we are up.
Christine, what do we have? One second here. What do we have in E and D as of today?
I believe we have $960,371.
964.71?
Yep.
Thank you.
Exactly. 961,237.
237. 961,237. E and D. Dan?
All right.
Thank you.
As of the last meeting, when we had our budget, sped was in the hole, 460,361,17.
Yes.
And it went up how much more?
Two, six, close to 650. I don't have the exact number.
One minute.
Yeah, it's up. It's 650, so what's that number off the top?
Around two.
Well, this was 460, so we're up 650.
So we're up 190,000.
All right, so we can't touch E and D then.
That's two out of districts at 50 and an 88 in transportation. That's where we're at.
That would take us right out of the water in E and D, so we can't do that. That's emergency funding. Can't be spending it on the budget.
Fred?
I think the, where we have time, we can worry about E and D in the coming weeks and with the full Munus report, you know, et cetera. You know, but right now, as far as what we have in front of us for an assessment, I can't see going backwards. And I believe it'll end up being up to the taxpayers to decide and we should let them decide. But I would be in favor of, I mean, 15%, 15.1, it's almost the same thing. I would urge everyone, if we could support, staying the same for another year, as horrible as that is.
15.1, I'm going to use for a figure, you can count one tenth of 1% off, would be $2,3,798 to Whitman, for a total of $15,273,983. Hanson's increase would be $1,345,914, for a total of $10,259,255. At 15.1, so if you take one tenth of 1%, you figure it out at 200,000, the figure's just a little bit less. For sake of me having to read this and vote it, Mr. Cullody, I hate to ask you to go up one tenth of 1%, but I have the numbers in front of me without recalculating it.
All right, I can go to 15.1.
Second.
Will you withdraw first?
Oh, withdraw the 15%.
Withdraw. Withdraw my motion of 15% and like to throw it out there as 15.1.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussions. Mr. Trotter, excuse me.
Probably more of an editorialization than anything else. Here we go again, we're talking about public schools. And we heard Jeff talk about students who are leaving the Whitman public schools. And they're leaving probably because of rumors of less staff, larger class sizes, which gives less attention to students. Then we come into, well, those that can perhaps afford to go to a private school will go. We have those that may choose to go to a charter school, which we essentially pay for, would go. And it seems to me that there is an erosion of public schools maybe starting here. I know if you follow the newspaper across the country, there is a battle between educators and their local government, based on salaries and how much money they actually put into the schools as far as what, excuse me, student supplies. the schools, as far as with, excuse me, with students, excuse me, student supplies, working conditions, classrooms, and so forth. So it just, it bothers me that we're in a position in which we're looking at something of lessening of what we have. I mean, I would not go beyond what we're suggesting, the 15.1, I should say below that. I think it's important that we have strong public schools. Public schools are created for everyone, and I think school choice is a good thing, but it's also a negative if some of our students are leaving Whitman-Hanson to go to East Bridgewater or Rockland because their budgets are in a little bit stronger position than ours are in. I think this is a sad commentary on the way in which public schools are looked at. It's a shame. I think the public schools are probably one of the best investments a community can invest in, and I would be disheartened if we could not support at least what we have presently. And that's my comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just say that I would love to set the assessment for even higher than that, so we can include some programs that we should be bringing back. But I know realistically, it can't happen, so I will just say for the record that I'm not going to ask for anything less than the 15.1. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Anyone else? Anyone in the gallery? Okay, I have a motion in the second to set the assessment at 15.1. No further discussion from anyone? All those in favor? Unanimous. We need to vote this. To approve the operating assessment to the town of Whitman for the FY 2019, 2020 budget in accordance with pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4, Paragraph D and E, and Mass General Law, Small C, 71, and 16B, at $15,273,983. I'm going to do them both together if everybody's all right with that. True, everybody good with that? To approve the operating assessment to the town of Hanson for the FY 2019, 2020 budget in accordance with the pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4, Paragraph D and E, and Mass General Law, Small C, 71, and 16B, at $10,259,255, which is a 15.1 percent assessment to both towns. I'm looking for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion before we take a vote on that? Anyone from the committee? Anyone in the gallery? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, important dates to remember, we have a Facilities and Capital Projects Subcommittee meeting, 6:30 PM on March 13th, here in the library. Also, on the 13th, we have a school committee meeting at 7:00 PM, here in the library. On the 29th, we have early release pre-K Professional Development Day, pre-K to 12, I'm sorry. April 5th, we have early release pre-K to 12 Grading Day. March 13th, again, there's a school committee meeting. April 10th, there is a school committee meeting at 7:00 PM, here in the library. April 15th through the 19th, there is no school, spring recess. The anticipated, as you may not see, an agenda, we'll be voting to accept the minutes of the 27th. This is on the 13th. The advisory report will be given, the superintendent will upgrade the committee on his goals, superintendent will report on North Room of Collaborative. Our business manager's Christine Suko will provide the year-to-date expenditures and revenue reports. The committee will further discuss the 2020 budget. We're going to revisit Hanson Capital Projects on the Warren articles. We will amend and adopt authorization to borrow, it's a vote. We will discuss a statement of interest for Whitman Middle. We will discuss the 19, in 2019, 2020 academic calendar. We will discuss the position of Director of Student Services. We will accept gifts and donations, and we will vote on field trips, and we will have subcommittee reports. That will be Wednesday night, two days from now, so we'd love to see all of you come back. It sounds like an exciting evening. Mr. Small?
Two items. One, on Thursday evening is the Conley Basket Raffle and live auction. I don't want to forget about mentioning that, I know that's a great, great, great time. And number two, I was going to ask the superintendent, if he could look into for Wednesday night's evening, as we've set an assessment, but we're not through with the budget. I know we had a math curriculum that was, is part of our budget, that could possibly be noted as a capital item, and maybe something of that nature could be used as a, either a debt exclusion or a capital exception, I think it's called, or a capital exception. So there might be a different way of being able to fund something like that. And I would ask if you could look into that a little bit and perhaps we can make...
So will it be part of the budget report?
Maybe in the Chromebooks, maybe in the Chromebooks capital.
Keep in mind, now that you've said that, the only danger to that, Fred, is if it goes to town meeting and it doesn't get voted, it's a problem.
Yep. I understand.
So we'll discuss.
Sure.
Okay. Entertain a motion with adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for coming.